Good morning, everybody. Welcome to October 10, 2025, School Board of Manatee County Workshop. Want to officially call this workshop to order. Any public comments? I don't believe I saw any. No? So before we get started, a couple of things, just because I don't want to forget this at the end of the meeting. So a couple of things. Dr. Breslin and I were talking about some scheduling stuff, so since we're all here, beautiful time to do it. October 28th is our next board meeting. If everybody can check their calendar, it's a night meeting at 5:30. Are we okay? Is everybody okay to be here at 4 o'clock for a shade for Safety and Security Quarterly Report?
Yeah, sure. I can.
Everybody good there, October 28th? 4 o'clock?
4 o'clock. You can do that?
Yeah. Perfect. Everybody good with that? Awesome. So we can book that one. Then from October 28th, we don't have another meeting until November 18th, which is really just our reorg. There's no actual meeting scheduled, like a real meeting scheduled then. So Dr. Breslin and I were talking about possibly throwing in a meeting in the week of the 10th through the 14th. Obviously, Tuesday, the 11th is Veterans Day, so we probably don't want to do that. My thought was let's just do it the 10th. Move it up one day and do it the 10th. Obviously, we'd come back to 18th. It's just, 18th is what our reorg and committee selection, you know, that will last probably about an hour, right? And then we wouldn't have another one till, remind me, December 9th?
We'll set our meetings.
Oh, we'll set it at the reorg.
But we're hoping December 2nd.
Gotcha.
The board will approve it December 2nd.
Okay.
December 2nd. FSBA.
Oh, you're not. You're an FSBA.
December 2nd is FSBA, so probably not. But we'll worry about that on the 18th.
So we'll have to set that.
So all I'm ask, all we're asking is if we can do on the 10th a morning meeting or a night meeting, whichever anybody prefers.
I know that several of us have received invitations to Veterans Day events at schools on the 10th.
Okay. Those are all during the day.
Those are all during the day.
You want to do a night one?
So I was, yeah, so I was going to ask if the board would be considered, consider a night meeting that day. That way we can attend those events.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, I could do a, a night meeting. I mean, that's, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah, me too.
On November 10th?
So 5:30, right?
Monday, 5:30. Everybody okay with that? Add an extra meeting in there?
Yeah.
I'm good.
I just think it's, it's a kind of a big span there to go from the 28th to the 18th. And 18th is reorg and not throw something in there during that, that 18th would be, would be good.
Mr. Chair, what time, what time do you have for the reorg meeting on the calendar?
5:30.
It is. Okay, I've got that in there wrong.
Hopefully, we'll have some good things to bring on bargaining.
That'd be fantastic.
That meeting as well.
That'd be fantastic. I know there's going to be some stuff we want to talk about after the meeting. So I know, I know we have the, the technology plan first. Can we real quick do the, the board policies though quickly? Before we jump into the technology, there's only four of them. I think that's going to be relatively quick. I don't even know, hold on one second. I don't even know if you have to come up here. Let's just see if. I mean, has everybody read these policies? Is there any questions? I mean, these are all pretty standard. There's nothing really major to them.
I had just had one suggestion that I had sent to Mr. Chapman regarding the Narcan policy. Because it only states children in the policy.
Oh, yes, we talked.
And, yeah, and just so the rest of the board knows, when several of us attended a CPR training a couple, what, a month ago? And they talked about how, the nurse talked about how actually they, they have used it several times for people in the like car pickup line, which are adults.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure adults were included as well.
Okay.
Heather, I'm sorry, was that in this packet or you, that was elsewhere that you have?
No, that was in, it was in there somewhere in the.
I totally missed that.
I'll have to look for which page.
Oh, I got it. I got it.
Okay.
We just have students, but needs to be.
It just has students, but students and adults. So just, that way it's in policy, so.
I would like, yeah, I would like to be able to help an adult.
Yeah, exactly. So that was, that was my only addendum.
Was there anybody else that had any addendums or thoughts on any of these? I did not.
It, it does say in here, student or adult has an overdose?
That's because they added it then.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It's already been added. Thank you. Okay.
Doesn't look like we have too many, unless you all have anything else to really add to it, I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I would just add. I would just add that these will be up for, for the public. These, these are now being advertised.
Right.
They're out for public comment. It does say to be brought up at a future meeting. We, we thought December 2nd, that may be December 9th, but we'll, we'll negotiate that as we look at the calendars. So they're.
Could be, could be the 10th.
Or December, either December, it sounds like maybe it's more like December 9th. They may be up for board approval, but that board meeting hasn't been set yet, so.
Gotcha. No, I'm saying, we could do it November 10th meeting.
The 10th.
We're adding that new meeting and it's been 30 days. We did it Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Is it not 30 days? Gotcha. Never mind. It'll be in December.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right, so, so these are out for the public, for public comment, and sometime in December, they will be approved.
Yeah.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Maybe, I don't know if you're, I noticed in the petty acts of conduct, the threshold for theft was moved to $750. Any idea?
Yeah, now be, thank you, Ms. James. Good question. Anything above $750 is now considered a felony. So we had to adjust that. So that's why that's been adjusted.
Okay. Okay, so these are all, all these petty acts of misconduct, we don't call law, is that, is that our policy? We don't call law enforcement for them generally? Or is it still up to our discretion, or is it?
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's discretion, but that's in, in policy now. So we just had to clarify that dollar amount because of the, of the felony charge of a, of a theft amount.
Okay. So what do we do if somebody steals $659 worth of stuff?
I think we would probably still probably involve law enforcement or the SRO on campus, but, and, and go from there. But, but whether the state attorney prosecute, you know, prosecutes and things like that, right? That's out of our hands, but whether an arrest is made and, you know, the legal system handles, as we've seen in other cases, right? That sometimes people are arrested and some aren't, so it's one of those situations.
I'll just make, I mean, I, I like the flexibility here where it says, does not require consultation, typically not considered. But the only issue is that Mrs. Jones' kid gets arrested for stealing $600 worth of something and, and Mr. Mrs. Jones' kid goes to see the sheriff. Mrs. Smith's kid gets arrested for $605 and for whatever reason, at another school, we don't call law enforcement. But I guess we just have to have that, that flexibility. But I would just encourage us to be consistent, right? So that we don't get those.
Great point, sir.
Yeah, because I've seen, I get those emails sometimes where, you know, well, my kid was in a fight at school X and, you know, got off with a slap on the wrist, but then, you know, or my kid got punished, right? Severely for being in a fight, but my neighbor's kid was at the school up down the road and they were in a fight and they didn't get the same punishment. I know the circumstances are different. I guess my point is just to be consistent so that we don't have to deal with that inconsistency.
Thanks.
Great. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Hanson, take it away for information technology for our annual update.
All right. Well, thank you, Board Chair, Board members. Dr. Breslin, District Leadership Committee members, thank you for the opportunity. Just a couple of reminders. We bring the technology plan by board policy. We're required to give an update annually to the board. So we generally do that annual update between August and December of every year. The technology plan will actually, the detailed comprehensive plan will come to you later this month. 100-plus pages, and certainly today's opportunity is just to kind of highlight where we're at with our strategic plan and the initiatives and the metrics, give you a quick update on those items, and then just kind of give you a sneak peek at what's happening this year and into next year. The plan overall is a five-year plan. That being said, I'll go ahead and get into the first slide here. So we've rolled out Focus Communications Module, so that was something the board approved last year. It's, has been implemented, and we're at a point where we were with the previous system. Our next step is to begin creating some additional opportunities within that communication modules for our teachers that are available. So we're beginning to work with our executive directors and principals on that piece in the coming few months. But that has been rolled out and has been implemented. And then, of course, our website transition is complete, but it's, it's always ongoing and changing every day. It is enhanced every day, every week, every month. And new this week is our new chatbot. So if you haven't had an opportunity to go out there on our main landing site or anywhere on the school, you can click on the Let's Talk and the little chatbots there. You can ask it a series of questions. How do I, how do I register for school in Manatee County? It'll come back with a response. So some of our initiatives there, we'll continue to build that database. And we're constantly looking at the questions being asked. We're providing information to that chatbot, and that's probably, that was one of the big enhancements integrating Let's Talk with that new platform. So we're excited about that. Ask it, what's the cost of a student lunch? Or how do I register my student for school? And it's going to point the parent right to the document on registration. So pretty excited about that enhancement that we did this week. Moving forward to.
Mr. Hanson, real quick, is that AI-generated and it's not?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's using that technology. So, yeah, correct, yeah. So we're, we're, we're also watching. Sometimes there's going to be questions asked that doesn't, it doesn't have a.
Sure.
It's going to come back and say that, but then our team is monitoring those questions. We're working with the different departments to make sure that we get those responses and building that. So it's going to be built, every day it's going to get enhanced, every day moving forward, so. So metric one, again, this metric just updated from a year ago, if you took a look at what we're doing. So annually, this is obviously changing each year. We provided the number of parents that completed VPK choice. We know that's always a big topic. And those numbers obviously increased again this year. But that's just a, a simple update on that metric. Metric one and two. Tech for Students program, we just started as we're surplusing additional devices with the refresh. That program's continuing. We've, I think we're getting anywhere between 40 and 100 devices already into the hands. Our, we have a process that when we surplus devices, those devices that are available, we work with our departments, with Deb Estes, we work with Kevin, community areas or community activities, churches, Boys and Girls Club, and we've done that over the past few years where instead of surplusing the devices to an e-recycler, we provide those devices and they have another year or two of life. Maybe the battery doesn't fully charge during an entire instructional day, but that's what we're, we're continuing that program. So we're excited about continuing that, that effort.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
So is this slide telling us about technology that was available to these students, or is this?
Yeah, so, so the Tech for Students program is, we try to, we look at a device and for the most part, these are devices that are maybe our Chromebooks that have been in our schools for five years. And then we take those and we generally surplus them. By law, we have to surplus them and send them to an e-recycler. What we do is we take a percentage of those devices that we still think we might be able to get another year or two out of potentially. Maybe not the best fit for online testing or assessment testing. And then we, we keep, we have a process in our service ticketing system where schools can request if they have a student in need. And then we route that device and there's a form the parent signs, and then that device is provided to them. And it's their device.
So what is metric one showing?
Metric one is actually the part of the parent engagement piece that we've reported on. It's part of our strategic plan. And it's just basically saying the number of parents that have completed a VPK choice process in February. So it's, it's
So these metrics.
Two different stra, metrics in the strategy that fall under our technology plan.
Okay, so those are not percentages that deal with technology, those are enrollment?
Part of our, part of our SIS department and the application process that's online through the VPK process.
Okay, so then this is probably for Dr. Breslin. So is that saying that 709 parents completed the VPK's choice process in February? 423 were approved and accepted? 279 canceled the application or were ineligible? I'm just curious, do we have enough room for everybody that applies or in our, in our programs or not necessarily?
Right, so the waiting list would reflect certain locations that might be quite full with their VPK. We do have room in other locations that have been offered, but oftentimes a parent wants the same location that their other sibling attends, right? And that's not always, always available, so we keep that, that child on a waitlist should it, should it come open. And you know, our schools that are, you know, bursting with capacity usually have a longer waitlist.
Do we don't, do we provide transportation for VB, VPK?
No, sir, we don't, we don't provide the transportation. We would if they qualify for ESE services, but not any, anything else unless it's a field trip, of course, to our SOAR lab.
Okay, great.
Just plugging that.
There we go. All right, thank you. Thanks, Ms. James.
And that information is all tracked in our student information system.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
So continuing on with number six, innovative technology advancements. With the completion, the upcoming completion of Palmasolo, our media centers, where we've created innovative centers in all of our schools, that, that metric will be complete. Obviously, Palmasolo, we waited because we knew the, we were building a new, new school site. So with that, that metric will be completed. We continue to, we were complete with our audio upgrade and video technology in all of our cafeterias in our schools. And now we're just kind of in maintenance mode over the next period of few years until that technology kind of moving forward becomes legacy in four or five years from now. So you'll see that down the road, but we, we have completed that metric. Metric four is actually involving E-rate and the actual connection, the fiber connection between schools as we bring new schools. And you see there that we applied and we received, that was just recently at the, during the board.
The last meeting.
The savings that we, there, so that's through combination of the federal E-rate program and applying for, the first time Manatee County Schools has applied for the, the state tribal match. And we were awarded that, which ultimately created a significant savings. So we were excited about that notification just in the last couple of months.
Would that be savings in the capital fund?
Yes. And depending, and then obviously based on the new construction where we're pulling those based on what fund source was created for there as well, so it could be, yeah, so, absolutely. So our refresh plan, we'll get into this in a few of the slides. For this year, 1,000 computers refreshed in our classrooms. The majority of those are instructional teacher mobile devices, and we'll, we'll get into that in a couple of slides. And then by February 2026, we'll have deployed just over 8,500 Chromebooks into our classrooms with a refresh. So the team has been extremely busy, working hard and ensuring that there's equity across all our schools. And you'll kind of see that in the comprehensive plan later this month. We refresh by model and number of years, so that way there's equity across all schools. New E-rate funding, yes, sorry.
No problem. Now, I've been out of the classroom a couple of years, but when, when I was in class, we, we had carts, you know, for most of the classes that we could use for our, our students in our class. Now, not every classroom had a cart. I was sharing my cart with the teacher across the hall, or their kids would run over and borrow, you know, Chromebooks periodically during, during classes. Have we reached the point now where every class has a cart? Because if we're going to the point where, you know, that where students are allowed to use their, their own technology in the classroom, then we need to make sure that they have access in every classroom.
Absolutely, and, and the plan addresses that. So we still leave it up to the teacher. So I, I can't say all teachers, but we continue to get requests. I think this year we've received about 15 or 20, so the senior engineers that oversee each region bring that back. And we've met every request. By and large, some teachers across every school wanted, but yes, we've, over the last three or four years, we've been able to provide a cart to every teacher that wants one. And we check in with our principals and remind them, and when there's a leadership change, and sometimes teachers change. Teacher maybe today didn't want a cart, but next year maybe they've decided they want one. We've seen a, a heavy increase the last two years with carts, but we've met each of those, those requests. We, we reach out as well to the school. The technicians are aware in our schools that we can certainly provide carts if a teacher, but we have some teachers that they have their own system and they don't want a cart in their classroom, so.
I just want to make sure that, that as we move to, you know, students not bringing their own type that is available.
In a new school purchase, we purchase a cart for every standard instructional classroom or new school purchase as well.
Great, thank you.
Yes. So the E-rate funding, the new E-rate funding cycle starts July 26th. We're, we're applying for that right now. So in the coming months, you'll actually see, I think in December, you'll see the Phase One Category Two projections. There was a significant increase in E-rate funding moving forward. They, they go in five-year cycles. So what that means for our school district is previously in the, the previous five-year cycle, the per-student funding was $167 per student. That's been moved to 20157, which for our district right now. And this number can fluctuate over the next few months. It'll get finalized by February based on Survey Two, Survey Three. What that means is for our district in the five-year cycle, we'll have just over $9 million for eligible services for Category Two. There's a long list, but in short, those items that we generally use this money for will be network switches and access points to ensure that we continue to upgrade and upkeep our infrastructure with the changing times and changing technology. Out of that $9 million, the cost for our school district that represents in our budget is just over 1, 1.8 million dollars. So we'll apply for hardware and eligible services in the amount of $9 million, and our share over that five-year period will be 1.8 million dollars. And again, that number will fluctuate. I'll update the technology plan once those numbers become finalized based on Survey Two and Survey Three data. Our high school auditoriums and athletic fields, we've made significant progress this year. You'll see that in an upcoming slide. We continue to monitor the auditoriums. Usually the cost there is a little bit more expensive to upgrade that audio and video technology. So we monitor that. It's not needed as much, but we're monitoring that. We work with our MST TV department as well in conjunction with coordinating those installations and those upgrades. And then, of course, on the athletic fields, we do the same. And you'll see, again, in the plan, it shows a comprehensive upgrade, making sure that we're upgrading those athletic fields with sound, microphones and necessary equipment across all of our athletic fields. Printing services, metric one, obviously equipment was operational in February, so we're just maintaining that based on the lease agreement the school board approved. So no real change there. And then obviously, there is a, a metric, when you talk about access points in our school district, that's wireless access points, which we have a considerable amount of wireless devices in our school district. That's the updated, those numbers really changed this year based on the, the two new schools opening. Those numbers will obviously increase again next year with two additional schools. But that's the number of access points in our high schools, middle schools and elementary schools, and in all of our district locations. And then metric two is just evaluate cloud readiness annually, consistently looking at all applications. The majority of all of our applications are, are in the cloud, just maintaining that readiness, the cybersecurity posture and those things that we need to be aware of to make sure that we have appropriate readiness to support all of our school, school-based applications. Metric three is, is also part of that $9 million. It's an eligible service. Last year, we completed Lakewood Ranch and Manatee High School, the, the infrastructure cabling upgrades. They were in, in much needed, but we used E-rate for that, so we only paid 20%. And that's part of that $9 million. This year, we're going to apply for Southeast and Palmetto High School and work on that. Those projects won't actually start until 26, 27, so you apply in the one year ahead. We get a funding commitment decision letter, and then we work with our school principals on the timing on how to do that. And we have a certain deadline to complete that wiring, which is September 30th of the following year.
Mr. Hanson, metric number two there, what does that exactly mean, evaluate cloud readiness annually?
Just ensuring that if we have on-premise hardware or applications, does it fit to move it to the cloud and make that transition before we buy additional hardware in our data centers? It also means that if there are certain services, user authentication, those types of services that might be better fit in the cloud for, for redundancy and resiliency and business continuity purposes. Our team is constantly looking at that, if it makes, makes sense to make that shift to the cloud as opposed to buying hardware in our data centers.
Okay, but we have local backup data centers right now, is that correct?
We do. We have two data centers. That is correct.
Okay, and can you explain, because I have some constituents that asked me why we haven't gone to the cloud. Why do we, they, they say the local backup data centers are old, it's old technology, everyone's going to the cloud. It's safer, it's more secure, but I don't know. I'm not a technology guy, so could you help, help us all understand why we keep the local?
Sure. Yeah, I think, so a good example is our, our student information system is already in the cloud. It's been in the cloud for 10-plus years. Our ERP system is on-prem, and, and that's really.
I'm sorry, what does?
On-premise, I'm sorry. Sorry. So on-premise means it's local here. It's, it's local here, so it's within our direction. We're, we're providing hardware, power, resources, failover. So certainly, there's, there's, there's pros and cons to both approaches. But at the end of the day, the cloud data centers are ultimately just another data center in a geographic region in the country, right? So, but, but certainly, we're, we're consistently looking at that. We felt two-plus years ago, when we brought to the board last year in the technology plan, we kind of went over that, that expense that we had for, for our business system currently. It made more sense for us to keep that on-prem from a financial aspect. So there, there are costs involved in moving your core systems, ERP and student information system to the cloud. And for, for our district, the application that we use for our ERP system, there was going to be a considerable investment to move that to the cloud. So we felt that the, the short-term, next five years, and that's, you know, I kind of mentioned that last year in the slide that kind of took the, the board through what those costs would be if we decided to make that move in the near future. So it's something that we are constantly looking at annually. But, but ultimately, we felt last year, from a cost perspective, it was in the best interest of our school district to keep the ERP system here on, in one of our data centers.
So, again, not being a technology expert myself, like you said, a, a cloud is just a data center that instead of being down the road, is in Singapore or Thailand.
Yeah, for us, we want to keep them stateside, though.
Okay, so it's in Seattle.
We want to keep them stateside in geographic regions, and, and that's very, a, a good question and, and very similar to what our SIS, our, our email system that we use is in the cloud already. So the, the predominant number of applications that we leverage are in the cloud. The biggest one being today is our, our business system is still on-prem. There's, there's pros and cons to, to both of those, but I think with, with our, our ERP system and the investment we made last year, this is something that, you know, obviously is ongoing discussion. And, you know, next year or the following year, we'll, we'll have to start staging out in the technology plan. I've already put it in. I've already put it in there, that if we're going to make an investment with our data center equipment, that will be another capital investment that we have to make. So those conversations, obviously, you know, moving forward in the next couple of years are, are certainly going to be there if we're going to make that capital investment, or are we going to shift our current platform into the cloud? And then we'll discuss those costs and what.
But, but isn't a cloud just a data center that's?
It is, and, and you're, you're going to leverage, you're, you're, it's a physical data center that, that is in another geographic region that ultimately, and, and there are various studies that show that it's, it's more cost-effective to place it there because you don't have that capital expense, you're not paying for that backup power, all those things, right? So you're leveraging, you know, a, a much larger scale environment in that, in, in that, in that case. But again, a lot of that has to do with the systems that we're running, and we have to consider that as well.
So basically, you've kind of just made a pros and cons evaluation and said, at least for now, it is more cost-effective and maybe, maybe more operationally efficient to keep the data centers local rather than to ship our, for certain programs, for certain.
Right, and we're.
Systems, rather than shipping them to a database, because the cloud is just a database that's not here. It's in Seattle or North Dakota or.
And we, and we still have some functionality, that if something happens with our internet connection, we can still provide services internally and keep things operating, local, on our local fiber network. And with our agreement with Manatee County and where we host our primary data center, because we've gone into a, in our local agreement with them and shared space with the fiber that we own on our side and provided opportunities for them to use our conduit on the east part of the county. Through 2037, we do not pay anything for the data center at the county level where we hold, that's our primary data center for our ERP system, which is obviously a Cat Five building. This building, not a Cat Five building, so this is our failover, but we host all of our equipment in the Manatee County data center.
So we have a, we have two backup data centers, a primary and a.
Primary and a secondary, that is correct.
Well, that was an interesting discussion, and then for those constituents who are techies that ask me this question all the time, I can, I can throw around hack names, like, well, we keep it on-prem, seeing that makes me sound.
There you go, yes.
That was good, because I'll just say, well, go watch that, I'll give them the little clip.
And I think as, you know, next year and the following year are certainly discussions that we'll have to continue to have as we look forward to that capital investment four years out. We're in year two now, and, and we have a comprehensive warranty plan over that, that infrastructure. And then in year five, six, and seven is when we're going to, we're going to be kind of primed to, to make another capital investment with that hardware.
Okay, great, thank you for that.
Great education.
Mr. Hanson, I have a question about the ERP. How much do we pay annually?
I'm actually going to get to that slide.
Okay.
If I can get to that.
That's all right.
That is coming up.
But I also have on Slide Six, if we can go back, I'm sorry.
Go back.
The, uh, audio and video, metric for, audio/video for high school auditoriums and athletic fields. It says, see Slide Ten, which is the schools, basically, is what we're going to do.
Correct.
These are all capital, right, uh, correct, all capital projects?
Yeah, they, for the most part, yes. There, there could be some general fund money in our technology budget, depending on like maintenance of effort. If we've got to replace a, a fail, a piece of equipment that's failed because of inclement weather. But for the most part, when we, when we install new sound systems in athletic fields, it's on the capital side.
Okay. Will there be any kind of upgrades inside the, what do you call it, Chad, where you're at?
Press boxes?
Yeah, press boxes.
In the press boxes? Well, when we, when we implement, well, Manatee High School will be our, up, upcoming, and by January 26th, we'll upgrade the, the audio and certainly, equipment in there will be upgraded based on the audio system that we're putting in there. Historically, in some of our press boxes, sometimes the boosters have additional equipment that they purchase and are allowed to purchase in those press boxes. But from a, from an infrastructure standpoint, we ensure that the sound system that's used for athletic events and obviously for graduation, in some cases, in the case of Manatee High School graduation. So I'm, I'm not going to say a hundred percent of all equipment is replaced, but the main infrastructure for the sound system in our athletic fields are replaced.
Okay.
And it's a little different solution sometimes when, you know, we've got two athletic fields, baseball field, softball field at Manatee High, and then, of course, at Palmetto, right, that are. Yeah, so sometimes the solution looks a little different there, but we ensure that we work with the athletic director and the coaches and the principal to make sure that the, the sound system is something that.
So they put in wish lists to you, I'm sure.
Yeah, we work, yeah, we work directly with them, they do walkthroughs, we address the needs during the assessment window or the maintenance period, work with them, and if we need to improve sound in a, in a part of the athletic field from the previous implementation, we do that, but they're, they're heavily involved in that process, and we have them sign off on it once we, once we do the implementation.
Do we consider the, like, the lighting system part of that technology?
Now, the lighting system, I have to turn to Mr. Clark and maintenance. It's not getting out of our, our wheelhouse in technology when it comes to lights.
Similar process, yeah.
Okay, because I, I was at Palmetto, and I know that they have a lighting system on top of their press box that they have to use a ladder to get up to, and it had some perking damage, so.
They installed that themselves, like, those lights, they installed themselves.
Did they?
They paid for it themselves, not district funds.
Okay.
Yeah, for some, but I'll follow up a little bit.
Yeah, because it, it's primitive, I'll say that, it's pretty primitive, the way they have to get up there and, and manage that system, so, okay, that's what I had, thank you.
All right, I think we completed that slide. So here's twenty-five, twenty-six, so you can see those schools, we've already started, and in some cases, a, a number of those schools, the teachers have received their new laptop, the team is, they just arrived just, just last month. Team is actively working on that, so those are our schools there. And just a sneak peek, next year, from a teacher refresh or instructional side, we have our two new schools in Lincoln Middle, and then it's another big year. You'll see the five-year plan in the comprehensive. This is just a snapshot of this year, the schools that received or are receiving currently new laptops for their instructional teachers, and then next year is a, a little bit of a light year. Then we ramp back up in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. E-Rate, again, these are, I just mentioned that earlier, these are the schools Phase One. So over the next three years, we'll be phasing in. That first column, historical install date, kind of shows when we install that infrastructure equipment. For the most part, these are switches in our communication closets and all of the access points in the schools. So those are the schools that will be up, we'll install that somewhere between probably September and spring break of next year. And all that depends on when we receive our funding commitment decision letter from, from USAC. Technology upgrades, so significant this year, these are the high school gyms. This was an area where we really need to address across our, our high school gymnasiums, and these are all, have been completed somewhere between June and, and last month, and in September, for our high school gyms. And you'll see where those other schools fall at, some of those were already done the previous year, but you'll see that in the comprehensive plan, and then looking out five years, we just then maintain, obviously, with, with inclement weather and those types of things, sometimes we have to make some adjustments and replace a component in those systems.
Another question on the technology upgrades on that Slide Ten. What do you do with all of these old sound systems?
Throw away, they're terrible. Yeah, we go, yeah, yeah, so, I mean, we, we surplus them, we, we do surplus.
I was going to say, do we?
Sometimes, sometimes we part harvest, and, and sometimes there are, there, there might be components that are still, so in an emergency, just like we do with our surplus of computers. We part harvest when you have the number of systems that we do. The teams look at that equipment, there's a process. In some cases, the, the equipment is, to Mr. Choate's point, it's, it needs to go. But we do, we do part harvest, and, and that helps us in an emergency.
And most of the sound systems, I'm guessing, well, this is audio and sound, I guess, are, uh, the sound system are all wireless pretty much now?
There are components, and, but there, there are components that are wired as well. So it's just, that's part of the assessment and, and some of the technology that we're implementing.
But from press box to speaker is wireless, correct?
In some cases, we still have some infrastructure there, based on the scenario or the location. But there are, there are, there, there, it's a combination of both.
Okay.
So, yeah, so. And we're constantly looking and reviewing that technology and what's available between our, our, our team and, and Matt's team in MSTV.
Okay.
We are certainly putting technology that's relevant in, that's available. But, you know, oftentimes, we're always chasing that, right? What's, what's relevant today is, is not relevant in a year or two, right? It's because of just the changing pace of technology. But we are putting relevant technology and taking advantage of, of those infrastructure systems that are available to us.
Do we have a, do we have a, an MTC in the, the audiovisual, that sort of thing that we have at MTC, that program? Do they do any repair certification? Like, could we use some of that old stuff to say, donate to them and say, learn how to fix, you know, that they could?
Sure, yeah, we, we've actually done that. We've taken, we've taken in the engineering programs at MTC. Nope, it's not there. So we've done that, so that region, when we have, again, surplus devices, a lot of times in the engineering labs, we'll take existing computers that we've pulled out of the classroom and place them in some of those engineering labs where it gets kind of dusty, and that's all they need. So we, we supply those because we don't want to buy necessarily always a new computer, in some cases, based on the program, those instructors at MTC, and even in, in some of our high schools, we'll take those devices, and, and then we just refresh them every year. Because after a year, being in those labs and engineering, just the nature of what they're doing.
Right.
So we do that consistently every year. Interactive displays, so this year, again, this is just a snapshot at the high school, middle school, combination schools, and elementary schools. That first column is basically a, a running total. We now have, as we've standardized on Permethion moving forward, we, each time we buy a Permethion display, we get a full seven-year warranty as part of that purchase price. And what that ultimately means, if that, if that Permethion board fails, any component fails over a seven-year period, we send it back, they ship us a brand-new board at no cost to the school district. And then we have spares, because there are going to be failures that occur, and our teachers, many of them rely heavily on using that as a, a piece of their supplemental curriculum. So that just shows you that snapshot, and you'll see equity across the entire plan. In some of our schools, you'll see a different year, and part of that's because three, four, or five years ago, we either had three- or five-year warranties on devices, and, and we also took, in some cases, two years to outfit a school. Now that we're getting everybody on a building refresh cycle, just like we're doing with computers, we're able to do that and move, move systems off. But we're also taking displays out of one school and, and using that to get us through when we have ten or fifteen that we've got to wait for another year or two, so we pull those to the side, so we have hot spares, so we're not purchasing new, new technology unless we are adding a wing and we bring in, bring in new displays at that time. So systematically, that process is, is very relevant and keeps us up on a, a consistent pace, so our teachers are all kind of on one platform at a school. Middle school snapshot, and this year, across our schools, we've, the team is finishing up at our last two schools. They're, I think they're finishing up at Braden River High, and then we moved to Manatee High School. With the completion of Manatee High, we should have that complete certainly by the December break, probably somewhere in that late October, November timeframe. We'll have implemented five hundred interactive displays across the, the schools listed in these columns. So you can certainly take a look at that as time permits. But again, you'll see this, this refresh over the next three, four years, and you'll see, again, that projection of that seven-year period, trying to get anywhere from five to seven years out of those devices. And it's projected, so if we're still getting firmware updates and software updates, and those things are working, and it's functional, we kind of move it out here. So it's, it's projected for planning purposes, but we also have to align that in the five-year capital plan as well.
So an interactive digital display panel is like a, like a whiteboard, but you can touch it and.
Seventy-five inches, generally speaking, in, in our really large classrooms, it can be eighty-six in some of those really large classrooms.
But it's a, it's.
But it's interactive touch.
Yeah, okay.
Do we, how often do we look at the vendor that we get those from?
Well, we, we just did, I mean, we, we just looked, we actually did this, it's been three years now. So we, going back to, you know, somewhere between 2017 and 2019, 2020, we actually had two platforms. We had Samsung displays and Samsung Interactive, and then some of our schools had Permethion displays. And we brought eight schools in, our principals brought in a group of teachers. We did simultaneous presentations at that time, this was three years ago, now, time's going by quick. We brought them in, did simultaneous back-to-back presentations, and the teachers, it was, it was their choice. And unanimously across all eight schools, they selected the Permethion interactive display. So after, after eight schools, I thought that was a, a good enough sample size. And, and again, we communicated, had conversations, I go out and do assessments and speak to the principals. You know, a better half of, half of our schools were already on Permethion, and those principals, APs, part of that discussion, they're like, we want to continue with Permethion, so that also played a role in it as well. But we, we brought in schools that were on the other platform, and we made that move and, and that recommendation, so that the schools were heavily involved, because they're the ones using it.
Right, right.
We need to support it at the end of the day.
But we know how fast technology changes and products change.
Correct, yeah.
So I don't know if, if we've been using them for five years, I always use that five-year mark.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's obviously, you know, different interactive panels out on the market, there's a number of them. We're consistently looking at them, but I think that from the standpoint, the Permethion has been a, a long-term leader. It's a very good product, and, and it hasn't not answered any of the questions in the classroom. So I think that's part of it too, right, is, is the display offering something that, or maybe is it no longer offering something that we need to, to leverage? So, but we're consistently creating opportunities for professional development for, for our teachers and school administrators who leverage that technology and feel really good about that selection over the course of the next three, four, or five years. Moving forward to elementary schools, again, same thing, projected years, so you kind of, just again, from an equity standpoint, because we do have changes and people come, come and go, so this just keeps an update on when the technology. If we have one of those schools where maybe it took two years, you know, four or five years ago, to implement the panels, that's why you may see a discrepancy in the future refresh year. We go off a, a higher percentage of the panels and, and determine the, the refresh year, the following year. And then some of those spares that we get from a school, we put those to the side so we can keep, so we're not buying new. Every now and then, a new wing pops up and you're, you're off-cycle, but they're getting the same model, the same curriculum, so the teachers, regardless of what grade levels are there, they're on the same platform, so for consistency.
I just have another quick question about the screens. Okay. I know we had Samsung forever, for a long time.
Around sixteen, seventeen is when it started.
Sixteen, seventeen.
And we still have them, and again, some of those schools are going to start getting refreshed next year, the following year, over a three-year period, so all of those panels are going to have been in our, in some cases, already seven years.
So seven years ago is when we had Samsung into our, but were those interactive?
No, some of them, no, and many of our high schools were non-interactive panels. They were just display-only. But we have made the, the transition to a full interactive in our secondary schools.
Okay, it, I guess I'm a little stuck on the, on the one brand of touchscreens, because I know there are others out there.
There are.
And, and that's where I'm like, is there an opportunity to maybe get a better deal with another vendor other than, what do you call them, screen?
Permethion.
Permethion, where do they come from? What vendor do we use for that, do you know?
Reseller, CDWG.
CDWG.
Is their reseller, you don't, you don't buy direct from Permethion, you have to use a reseller, so we, it's.
Where's their reseller at?
A reseller is like CDWG or Insight, somebody who resells a product.
Resells, resells a pro, okay, so.
You can't buy direct.
Manufacturer's not right.
Like our HP computers, you can't buy direct, you have to use a approved reseller, so that could be any number of companies.
Where is the company that we mostly use? Well, I, I know we're using a reseller, but where is that company that you typically go through?
For interactive devices, we buy all of them through CDWG based on the board-approved contract.
And are you saying where their location?
Where they located.
Right, what?
CDWG is a, a very large company, they have offices all over the United States. And, I mean, they have a, a relatively large office in Chicago.
How do we, how do we find these screens? I mean, do they just?
Well, Promethian, Promethian displays have been, Promethian displays have been in K-12 systems for my entire twenty-five-year career, just like SMART, uh, there's, um, there's New Line is another interactive vendor. Um, there's ClearTouch is another vendor, there's lots of vendors. I think the most important thing is keeping consistency in our classroom. And again, making sure that we involve our teachers in that process. And, and we certainly did do that. At the end of the day, um, we've got a very good comprehensive plan with the Promethian that includes professional development, content, um, that can be used across all grade levels, whether from, from pre-K through twelfth grade and even in our MTC location. Um, and then a, a full seven-year replacement warranty. Not everybody offers a full replacement warranty. Many of them offer a warranty in which they try to just replace the failed component, and that creates some, some challenges as well.
And you said we went from seventy-two to eighty-some inches in, in a classroom?
No, so we, um, traditionally, we went, um, uh, by and large, over, over time, they've changed from sixty-five. Our standard is seventy-five now. In our very large classrooms, or like a media center, you'll see an eighty-five or an eighty-six inch display in a very large classroom. There's not many of those in our system, but the standard display is seventy-five inch in, in an instructional classroom. And that's pretty much the standard across all K-12 districts.
Off the top of your head, how much is one of those screens?
Just over, um, our Promethian cost for a seventy-five is just over twenty-eight hundred dollars. It's the most expensive device, uh, but then you range that over a seven-year period and the number of students it impacts. And, and that's how, one of the ways you would weight that cost.
Yeah, and if I may, it's just from experience with elementary, especially colleagues, it's a, it's an incredibly powerful tool.
Oh, yeah, I, uh, yeah, I'm just like?
Twenty-eight hundred bucks is a deal, you know, for the effect it has, like I said, especially in an elementary classroom. High school, I don't know, maybe not. I never used one when I was in high school, Heather, maybe you did.
I did.
Chad. I'd say, uh, we didn't have one in my classroom, uh, Southeast had gotten the, the Samsungs, which I was not a fan of, because you had to connect your TV, your laptop to it, and then you couldn't pull all those neat things that, that you wanted to use. And then, of course, if Wi-Fi cut somewhere, then you were like, oh, wait, my computer's no longer. So, when they were bringing in the Promethians, I was bummed that I wasn't there, you know, when they brought them in. But, you know, but seeing them in, in the high school usage, um, as well, it's, it, the things that you can do with that are really amazing. And then also, if you were in a, in a lab, um, setting like science classrooms, and they have them at the different stations, then you can make, project to the other station, so kids working in smaller groups are seeing the same thing. So, everybody's not doing this maneuver to, uh, spin around and look behind them. They've got it right there, they can interact, you can see what's on all of their technology.
Science teachers, I mean, you know. Uh, I knew I was, I knew I was going to get a look. I'll watch the science teacher, so.
I know, I know.
Hopefully she's not watching.
I don't know, you know, one other question is, the little camera that teachers in elementary?
Document camera?
What is it?
Document camera.
Right, they'll put a little?
Document, yeah.
Right, document, and it projects to that screen, is that the same screen?
It will project to that interactive display.
It does.
It does.
Okay, so that?
Instead of a pull-down screen.
Right, instead of a pull-down, right, well?
Very popular in elementary school, yeah.
Well, I'm older than that, I remember the?
Oh, yes!
Clear plastic, the clear plastic trans?
Miss Bundren's taught me Algebra I, Algebra II on those suckers.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, in the manufacturing, they use those too, trust me, in trainings, so, yeah, it was a pain. But they were great for projecting on the wall to paint, I'll tell you.
Sure, sure. And it's amazing, I used Elmo, put on my whiteboard, and then so kids could come up, so, try to make it interactive before the interactive TVs, right? Which would be nice. But I remember when we first got those boards, and I was at Braden River, my first year teaching, and we had like one, and you had to like roll it around when teachers wanted it. And it was wild, and it's like, hey, I want it for this.
It's like the carts.
It was very cool, like during like, I taught history.
Every time you moved it, you had to reset.
Yeah, and I taught history, and it's like, you could show an interactive map of like World War II, right? And show Europe and show, it was, it was really cool what you could use. And this was two thousand and seven, right, eight, nine, like, so, the, I mean, what we, what you could do now on them are, is phenomenal. I think what Ms. Spray's point is, because I'm, I, I'm with her, obviously, is, I want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck at the right price. Is there another product out there?
Yep.
I've never worked with any of these, you know, Samsung, Promethian, whatever. I do know that if I had to hook up my computer every time, I mean, it's just, it's just time and, and I, spending five hundred bucks is worth that?
Sure.
To me, and making sure it's consistent, I think that's the question is.
Twenty-eight hundred bucks of screens at all?
Are we able to get something else for two thousand, and is that two thousand really worth it and et cetera, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we, and we, um, so, very familiar with, um, in my, the former district, we used, um, two different panels over a, a large period of time. They're both still there. Um, you know, certainly, um, you know, we can chase, chase the dollar and chase the price. That, that's, that's always available in technology, right?
Are we piggybacking off of another district for this?
We are, well, off of, off of?
And what district is that?
Collier County.
Collier?
Collier County, yep. And off a much larger scale of devices, but we are getting, from a Promethian standpoint, with the warranty, the professional development, those things. We are looking to, to, to answer, I think, where you're going with this is, the, we are looking at our, um, content management system. So, a lot of the times you go into the schools and you'll see they'll have maybe, um, events that are going to happen, um, at their school. Uh, they may have birthdays, or they may be recognizing, uh, one of the clubs or, uh, the football team. So, that's part of the content management, we're currently evaluating that. We currently have the Samsung product that we use for content management. We are looking and having discussions with, um, some other vendors on what that looks like. But I also want to go back to those sixty-five-inch displays, um, since we're kind of talking about costs. What we did at Lakewood Ranch High School, if you go and visit Lakewood Ranch High School, we took that sixty-five-inch display only. Um, and again, we worked with the principal, it was based on, you know, their needs and what they wanted and their teachers. And when we brought in a new Promethian device, we took that in, in our high school classrooms, there's enough wall space, generally speaking. And if, if needed, we took, took that sixty-five-inch display, placed it on alternate wall and connected them. So that, again, if you're, if you're sitting in there, so, because we can get three, four more years out of that display. So, that created an opportunity where now that the, the teacher has an opportunity to slide a document over there and keep that there, still work on the interactive. So, that was, that's available as we cut these schools over, uh, and there's wall space, uh, place for us to hang it. We do that during that installation. So, again, we're creating, uh, some additional opportunities to keep that device. Now, that's not in the plan to replace that sixty-five-inch display. When it, when it, uh, when it goes, it's, it's, it's gone. Uh, we don't have that in the plan, but we want to, we want to try to use those devices. To your point of the document cameras, elementary school teachers love the document cameras, it's an optional device that they purchase, um, at the school level, using some of their funds. At the secondary level, though, teachers, they want to move around their classroom. So, um, that's something that we also have to consider moving forward, because our secondary teachers like to move and not necessarily always have their back to, to, to the, uh, to the students. So, that's something that's obviously out there, and you'll see, uh, we're trying to get, uh, as much out of those tablets that, uh, Ms. Felton referred to earlier, but that's something moving forward. Uh, we've really transitioned from the Samsung tablet to an iPad, because we think it offers, uh, a, a better user experience. So, that's what, that's the recommendation, and we've been doing that the last two or three years. And the other part of that is the Samsung tablet is becoming, for the most part, end-of-life, and the software is relatively expensive. So, we're, but we've been phasing that tablet out, but that's something you may hear in your visits. Um, but the iPad is an optional device for, for the schools to purchase, uh, because again, our secondary teachers like that, that mobility in the classroom.
Well, m- my whole, uh, reasoning behind all of this is the cost per screen. That's just outrageous to me, uh, twenty-five, hundred dollars.
You're looking at another vendor, you're still looking at the low-twos, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. You might get a vendor coming in, uh, that wants to put their foot in the door at eighteen or nineteen hundred dollars. Uh, but then is that worth the, the complexities?
My thing is, okay?
It creates challenges for us as well, from a training perspective, um, because we only have so many resources and we can only create so much training documentation and get out there and have subject matter experts. And putting those, our training team, we have a very small training department, it impacts curriculum as well, because on the curriculum side, there's, there's challenges, you, it's, it's difficult to, to be a, a subject matter expert and assist teacher.
Have we ever put our own bid out instead of piggybacked off of somebody else's on these?
We, we evaluate that all the time, but at the end of the day, this is, this is something that, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, that was prevalent. But, um, we ensure that we're getting, um, price adjustments and that we're not overpaying for something. Um, that's, that used to happen in the early two thousands, twenty-ten, where you could, you could put an HP bid out and you put one out the next year in Dell, and then districts are switching, that creates challenges as well. That, those, those, with the, the hardware with interactive panels and, and computers, it's not so much about putting a bid out. It's, it's ensuring that, um, that vendors understand that, that they should be offering the best price point based on the quantity and volume that your, your district is purchasing.
Exact, and that's my point.
And that's what we're, and we're ensuring that.
Right, if we're using, if we're, if we're piggybacking off of Collier County, which is pretty much like us as far as student body and all of that, uh, if we?
That doesn't lock the pricing, yeah. That doesn't lock the pricing.
No.
That's the procurement contract, so, just like computers.
All right.
Computer pricing, we've locked in a contract, but those prices are going up and down. And the Promethian panels, in some cases, one year could go down, sometimes it could go up, but it's going up for everybody. That's not locked, we're not locking in a specific price for a three or a five or a seven-year period. No vendor is going to lock in a price for three, five, or seven years on a piece of computer equipment.
Right.
Anything.
Correct, we monitor, we monitor.
I, I'm more about volume, I'm more about the volume buy. When several districts are using the same products, you can get volume pricing. It all goes through purchasing, you know, if, if, that's like, okay, if you have several districts that has a need to upgrade their screens and all these schools that we're looking at, let's see. Well, let's see if Collier's ready to upgrade, if, if, uh, Brevard or, or Miami Dade are all doing this. Let's talk to all these districts and say, hey, let's all do a big package and, and do all this.
We're monitoring that price adjustment that's happening every quarter. And really, the industry is driving that, not so much who's, who's buying what.
And you have the ability to cancel the contract, void the contract, so we'll monitor.
I, I guess I'm just getting to the point of purchase power.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, if you have a whole lot of people buying the same thing, you're going to get a better deal.
Leverage.
Thank you, yeah.
But every quarter, those price adjustments are happening.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, valid point. So, uh, now we're getting into our final couple of slides. So, this is our student information system, um, what we pay annually for maintenance, support, and licensing. Uh, our focus analytics and communication module, um, obviously, the board just recently passed that in the last year. And that's, and we kind of rolled that out, uh, just recently. Uh, those are additional modules, um, that, uh, we've rolled out, we're providing training, uh, and obviously, our user base is getting used to that, to that change. So, and then total cost of our, our student information system there is four hundred and sixty K. Moving forward with our ERP system, um, let me just touch base on each one of these items. So, our maintenance and support contractor, uh, our Oracle cost, uh, as I mentioned last year, that, that Oracle support cost is licenses, um, that will adjust at a rate of around eight percent per year. Um, the LVS is the license verification form, um, that happens January of every year. Uh, and that number is based on our total operating budget in the school district. And we have to certify and provide, and it's based on what we publish on our district website. I work with Rachel Sellers, um, that document's there, I have to point, I have to fill out an electronic form, send that to Oracle. Last year, that cost was an additional hundred and seventy-two K. Uh, this year, I'm estimated around eighty-six K for this year, and that number's going to always fluctuate. So, that's additional perpetual license and is strictly off, um, our operating budget, is what that goes with. So, that's unknown every year, uh, based on our operating budget. And if our operating budget's going up, which traditionally lasts three or four years, it has gone up, um, that impacts that, that LVF cost.
Okay, at some point, I guess, this is my sticking point here, I guess. Um, the total cost for this PeopleSoft ERP was in the thirty-some million dollars. Plus, we've been paying million-plus every year to maintain that system since. So, we're up over forty-five million, I think, to manage this system. I mean, at what point are we going to say, okay, we need to start looking at a different system? I mean, how many years are we going to pay this, up to one-point-eight million dollars for this system? It's, to me, it's getting to the point of ludicrous. Um, I, I think that we need to, and you and I had a conversation about moving this ERP system to the cloud. I, I don't know what, how much that work entails, but, you know, one-point-eight million annually? Like I said, I think we're up to like forty-five million plus just to maintain this system.
No, 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 you're not, the, what you're talking about happened ten years, well, and you could probably talk to this.
That wasn't ten years ago.
Sure, if you, if you make me, sure.
It was like seven, eight years ago, seven, eight years ago.
Seven years.
But, but that was, that initial cost was converting, converting and stuff, not annually all the time. So, but no matter what system, correct me if I'm wrong, no matter what system, you're paying an annual fee regardless.
You are, yeah, so absolutely, so, I mean, you know, certainly, we, we've kind of leveled out now to Mr. Cho's point. We've kind of gotten over that, that initial implementation phase. You know, there's certainly opportunities moving forward for us to, to, to maybe create some app advantages moving forward to lower the cost. So, I think, I think those are discussions that, you know, certainly, you know, moving forward. Dr. Brez, just coming on board, um, I think those are, those are conversations that, uh, potentially, PeopleSoft in itself is a robust ERP system. Obviously, there's a cost associated to that, I, I, that's there. But I do think we have opportunities moving forward with our skill sets and our, our team and where we're at today, moving forward. I think there's, there's some opportunities to, um, keep us on this platform. Kind of, Mr. Tan's point earlier, we talked about that infrastructure upgrade that we did a year ago, where we invested, uh, about one-point-five million dollars in the hardware to support the ERP. Um, I do think there's some, some advantages and some opportunities moving forward to, to address your concern, Ms. Spray.
Yeah, I mean, all, any cost, I mean, it's great, but I think it's, I think it's like, um, it, we've already spent the money?
Sure.
To get the ERP where we have it now, working well?
Absolutely.
So, if we, if we said we're gone, we're going to move to something else, how much money are we going to spend, not only just the yearly contract, but also what we spent upfront with everything with, with PeopleSoft? If we go to People?
X, Y, Z, R.
Whatever.
E, E, X, Y, Z.
I was going to say something, sure. Yeah, and so, but, but, um, I checked myself.
Yeah.
And so, if we went to a different software?
Sure.
Are we going to have to put ten, fifteen million in to, to get it ready to go and then pay, you know what I mean?
And Ms. Cho, you're, you're right on that, and then also, just the, the bandwidth of the staff to, to move any type of ERP system at this time. Um, so, the goals we have set forth that we want to accomplish this year, it's, but certainly, we will look at the cost. I, I agree, it is a very costly annual expense. So, we'll take a look at that, and then in term and long term. I know we have other districts that are currently moving their ERPs right now, so always looking to see, um, how they're progressing is always, we can learn from others. Um, but at this time, the, I think the bandwidth of the staff is to, to keep our current ERP and just look?
Oh, I'm not suggesting we change, I'm suggesting we start looking?
Right.
We start looking, comparing?
Look at efficiency, uh, the, of the work surrounding it.
Better system, you don't have all of this, all of this maintenance?
And that's what we're doing, you know, Dr. Brez and I have, have, have even recently talked, and we've discussed, you know, putting, you know, she requested some information for me to put together and provide to her. So, we keep a very good, personally, I, I keep a really good tab on what all of our sixty-seven period districts are doing, um, and, and watching that and watching developments. But, but, you know, our focus is really supporting this ERP platform and creating opportunities moving forward that, that maybe we can adjust and make some, some positive moves to, to address some concerns around costs, and I think we can do that.
Chad, for me? Um, yeah, no, I'm, Mrs. Spray, I just wanted to address your concerns about the past leading into the future, and that was? We are fortunately, I won't go into the whole long story about how we got from nine modules and eleven million to twenty-eight modules and thirty million.
I am lost.
Lessons, lots of lessons learned for everybody involved, including the school board members.
Yep.
But we've made it over the hump, and, and believe me, I was in the same place you were. Actually, I was farther than you were, because when I was leaving the board in twenty-two, I actually had a conversation with Superintendent Saunders, saying like, we should ditch this ERP and go to something that is more, uh, robust and effective and is easier for. So, I had this conversation with her and we kind of hashed it out. And, you know, she made some good points, most of which being like, hey, look, we've made it, the employees are trained up. It's, may not be operating perfectly, but it's operating, uh, efficiently enough for our employees and for the system. And so, um, you know, when I came back, I kind of started exploring the same idea with, um, Dr. Weisong and then, and now? and then now I've had a conversation with Dr. Breslin about it. And as Mr. Hanson said, we have upcoming opportunities for, for savings. But I, I just wanted to let you know that I, I used to be in the, we gotta dump this and start something else. And then after I began learning more and talking to the experts in the field about it, like actually, I think we're in a good place. And to Chad's point, like, we're gonna pay a certain fee annually to maintain the system anyway. So I just, I just wanted to let you know, I was, I was in your camp, but I...
It's one of those things, hey, my board's thinking about another system, we need a discount. That kind of conversation, I don't know.
Yeah, it'd be, it would be a lot to, especially the employees have been through an ERP overhaul once already. What a traumatic experience that was.
I, I, I'm projecting, I'm projecting, you know, way farther out than just, yeah. That's what I'm looking at, you know? And I think there's opportunity to, because everybody's gonna go to, to cloud services anyway. It, it's coming, we know that. So I think it's just something we need to keep in the back of our mind.
Absolutely.
On what we're gonna do with this, because, and, and they're gonna charge too, we know that. But it's the saving side, just like the screens. It's the saving sides. I mean, I don't want our vendors to think that, oh, we got them forever now. I just don't want that. I always want to have that, we need to provide the best service at the lowest rate we can to maintain that particular vendor, meaning us, where they're, where they're supplier. So that's where I'm always at when, when it comes to purchasing. You know, always have that out there that they're looking. You never know when they're gonna change.
Absolutely.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So finishing up, roadmap, again, we've touched on some of these things here already. Just looking at what we're ultimately trying to accomplish from year to year. I talked about Let's Talk, we discussed E-Rate. You'll see some, an item come to, Phase 1 for E-Rate in December. Obviously, we're gonna continue to expand across both Focus Analytics and our Communication Module as our schools get more comfortable. And you'll see our teachers integrated and be able to leverage some of those tools as well in the coming months. And then obviously, just sustaining those district-wide refreshes of those major technology components. Finally, last slide, our Lightspeed Classroom Management Tool that we implemented has been certainly something our teachers, where there's some new enhancements that we'll be delivering over the course of this upcoming year to that. That's a product that really empowers our teachers to kind of manage the computers. The first time a teacher's really had the advantage of managing what the students are seeing on their computers. So that we talk about wireless technology. This has been an implementation that our teachers absolutely love, because now if they are working on a particular curriculum application, the students can open multiple tabs. And it empowers the teacher to keep those, those students. And then they reward them when they get off, they finish their assignment. Maybe they are able to browse or do something on another assignment. So that's, more enhancements are coming out there, but that's been a very successful. I think recently, Dr. Breslin mentioned what we're doing with AI and continuing with emerging technologies. Talked about the chatbot with Let's Talk. I know Mr. Cho, Ms. Spray, we attended the AI Task Force Meeting in Pinellas County a, a month or so ago. And I kind of shared some of the things then that we're doing. So moving forward, obviously, with curriculum instruction and a lot of our curriculum products, we're seeing those AI, AI models that are built within that framework. So that's progressing well. Project Data Fusion is our internal dashboard. I think to your point, Ms. Spray, this is a great example where we've taken, previously, our dashboards that we were using was a third-party. We've brought that in-house, and our team is now building those dashboards using the technologies that we have available to us today. That brought us savings of about $100,000 to our district technology budget this year moving forward. So again, that's that evaluation process that, based on skillsets available to us and our team and being able to manage those skillsets long-term. All of our dashboards now are being created by our team in-house using a product that we use in-house as opposed to paying a third-party vendor. So a great example of those dashboards. Safety and security, we mentioned that earlier this week in the shade meeting. Some of the enhancements are continuing to maintain that environment, the, the crisis alert system. And then ultimately, through the board's support, certainly appreciate what we do with Pro and having that engagement there, creating those opportunities for us to continue to improve our cybersecurity posture and, and that changing threat landscape. And you get those briefings from Pro and myself throughout the course of the year. So certainly appreciate that support. And with that, that's it.
Well done.
All right.
Good stuff. No, I'm excited. I'm excited about the AI, the, that symposium we went to, you know, and I think initially, everyone gets this, this negative connotation of what AI is and, but I think it's, it's not going anywhere, that's for sure. And I think we've got, there are so many tools that you can embrace that for education and, and use the right way, right? I mean, it's just like anything else, any other kind of technology, you can use it the wrong way and cheat and get away with things, just like we found ways to do that regardless if we had AI or not in school potentially, so.
So are you saying you cheated in school?
That's what I heard.
Never. But so I, but I do believe that it's something that we, you know, should embrace and not, not be so. And I, I thought Miami Dade did a great job of explaining.
Sure.
And not only just in the classroom, like in this, like, from the, from the informational thing, which we're doing Ask Me a Tea, like that same kind of bot, to the facility which you kind of showed us on your dashboard, the fish, I mean, remarkable stuff. And yeah, it's, it's, so I'm excited.
Yeah, we're, we're getting, our team is working on something pretty dynamic. I'll be bringing it to our, our cabinet members soon. That really will impact how our, our departments could potentially leverage this and, and as well as board members. And it's gonna be pretty exciting stuff that we're working on with the integration of our Project Data Fusion dashboard. We just had a team complete AI leadership through UF. So again, I know our curriculum team members, we sent somebody from curriculum and IT there, and then we had a group of IT members and myself just complete AI leadership, making sure we're taking all those things in consideration as we work with our curriculum leaders and roll this plan out that Dr. Breslin just recently mentioned in, in a recent interview. So we're getting excited, so exciting stuff moving forward for our district in that, in that area of, of technology.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Katie? I've just got two things, one to this topic, then I, kind of a board member comment before we adjourn, if you don't mind.
Uh, Ms. Felton has one too.
Oh, okay, great.
That's fine.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll finish up.
I wasn't gonna adjourn.
Just in case. It is Friday, so, no, I just want to share with the board that in my role as our board's liaison to the Audit Committee, I have been meeting quarterly with Serge from Pro, who has for over 10 years been our cybersecurity consultant. I'm sure you guys have met Serge before. But in the conversations I've been having with, with Serge, he has, I don't wanna say directed me or pointed out to me, but like in our conversations, we've kind of discovered some opportunities for cost savings, which Mr. Hanson has, has mentioned. But I, I, it's kind of cybersecurity-related, so I don't want to talk about it openly at a board meeting. I figure I can update the board on, on this kind of cost-saving idea next time we're in the shade regarding these topics that we're, that we're talking around. But I'm, I'm really excited to share those with you. But it is somewhat sensitive information, so I don't want to do it now.
Right.
But yeah, I think...
Maybe the 28th shade?
Yeah.
Yeah, next time, we have, we have to do a, we have to do a quarterly.
We're doing a safety shade during, on the 28, at, at 4, we remember.
Oh, so we can just roll it into that.
So I'm saying we could just add that if, if, attorneys, you guys are okay with that?
Yeah, it is, it would, it would, it would be a security, cybersecurity, you know, related issue, so.
Then you can bring it up there, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Cool.
Okay.
That's all, that's it for that.
So you wanted us to let Ms. Felton go first and then you, it may be the same topic.
It could be.
Okay, so we aren't gonna meet again for several weeks, so I wanted to bring this up today because it's the only time we're gonna get to talk about it. Everybody knows that the Schools of Hope...
It is the same topic.
It is the same topic. The Schools of Hope letters have gone out. We, our district received two. The parents of those schools affected have been notified as of this morning. And so now I want to talk about it. I've been waiting until after we were able to notify the families. I didn't want them to see it online before they, they heard it from us. I have several concerns, and I also want to take this opportunity to, to present this out to the public so that they can hear something about it. I know, I know, because it's been all over everywhere, that the public has been seeing the stories out of Sarasota. They've received three letters. Brevard has received 27. Hillsborough has received 28. I've heard various numbers from different people about how many have been sent out total. I've heard 111, I don't know if that's accurate. We're, we're still checking on that. And I really just want the public to understand that this is not something that I personally am going to take lying down. I know that I've been in contact with school board members around the state. All of us are pretty irritated, to put it in a nice way, about this issue. And I just want to make sure that, that the public understands that this is not something that is like our regular homegrown charter schools. This is not that. This is a company that is for-profit, moving in, taking over our spaces, and it's not just co-locating. Because when you look at the letters that they have sent to all of these districts, for example, I've got the one in front of me for Lincoln, Lincoln Middle School. They are planning to open in August of 2027 for K through 8, to be open for K through 8. Their projected first-year enrollment is up to available capacity of students. Their five-year projection is 963 students. That is going, that means they are planning to take over the entire facility, the entire school. This is what they're projecting for five years from now, or from then, to take over the entire school. So if we're going to, and, and it's not just our district, it says this in every letter. For the Sarah Scott Harley Center, their five-year projection is 782. Now, I taught in that building for the last three years. There is not room for 782 students in that building. Let me just say that straight up first. There's not room for that. And as we all know, the Harley Center houses multiple, multiple programs. So for our public out there, it holds the Early Learning and Family Support Offices, where they do testing for early learning. It holds the Sorin4 Lab, which we all know is fabulous, and we just got opened. And, and over my dead body are they gonna take that building? Okay, because, no, no. It's got the Access to Education Program for exceptional students. There are small numbers of people in each classroom. But when you have students in large chairs with personal aids, there's not gonna be a lot of kids in a room. They all have very special needs. The AMI program is there. The Sable program for School of Academic and Behavioral Learning Excellence. The short, it's a short-term alternative school for students with significant challenges. Our TAP program is there. There's a nursery for their babies, for these young women with their babies. All of these are housed in this building. And I had confirmed with Mr. Jensen that most of these don't get school grades. So it's not like the Harley Center is on the radar as a low-performing school. It's not in the list. Lincoln is not on the list of low-performing schools. And when you look at also the, the designations of areas that are supposed to be open for Schools of Hope, let's see, that is called, what is that called? That is the Opportunity Zones. Neither of these schools are in the Opportunity Zones either. They're not on the persistent low-performing schools list. They're not in the Opportunity Zones. And when you look at the statute, and, and if you haven't read it all yet, I highly recommend you do. It is statute number 1002.333. If you look at the statute, it talks about schools that have earned three grades lower than a C at least three of the five previous years. A school that was closed, a school that's in the bottom 10%. A, a school that serves students in the Florida Opportunity Zone. The only thing that actually these schools fit into is the Title I Eligible School. That's the only category these schools fit into. And, and people have been projecting, oh, well, it's gonna be this school, it's gonna be this school, it's gonna be this school. None of the ones that they are looking at are those schools that would be critteried for this program. And of course, with the rulemaking that just came out, they've, if you look at, at that document, which is Rule 6A-1.0998271, for anybody who was, you know, playing along at home and wants to look it up, they have added so much to rulemaking for this that it's almost not even recognizable as what was in the original statute. There is so much added to this, that it opens us up to, and, and as Liz Barker put it in the Sarasota Herald Tribune article, a hostile takeover. And I 100% believe that that is what this is. Our own homegrown charter schools have worked their butts off to be in this district. They go through a very strenuous process to get in here. They have to apply. There's so much they have to do to do this, to be a part of charter schools in our district. And these companies can sweep in here, move in without having to pay for almost anything. That's the really big thing. This is all on our dime, families out there, I hope you're all listening. This is on our dime. They can take over classrooms, and they have to be contiguous classrooms. So if you've got a room over here and a room over there and a room over here, you're gonna have to rearrange your school so that those classrooms are all together. So whoever's been established in an area, they are now going to have to move so that the Schools of Hope can have classrooms all together. They get equal access to the cafeteria. To transportation, we are gonna have to pay for their transportation. We are gonna have to pay for their cafeteria use. We're gonna have to give them office space. We are going to have to give them all of these things for free.
Welfare for charter operators.
Yes, and then these are for-profit operators. That's the big kicker. These are for-profit operators. They're sitting back there rolling in the money and we're paying for it. So I am obviously extremely irritated about this. This has been pushing my buttons for days. And I, I, I said this, as soon as, once I figured out what the FISH report was, I started getting irritated about it, because there is so much that is not included in that. It makes it look like our schools are empty buildings. And so all of this has been irritating me for months, and I've been talking about this for months, and all of you have heard me talk about the FISH report. And, and then of course, I love the, the letter that they sent us that, that says that, under the rule, any district objection must be based on material impracticability, impracticability, pardon me, and may be made within the statutory timeline, which is 20 days. They were giving us 20 days to do this, all right? And the district may propose an alternate, underused, vacant, or surplus facility. Hey, duet's empty, if they, if they want that one, they can go out to duet, that one's empty. However, acceptance remains at the operator's discretion. So we can offer them another space, but they don't have to take it. I mean, there is so much in this that has got us against the wall. And there is, we, we need the public to combat this. If we can get our families, our parents, our community organizations, just like they did with the ABACEIBCTE funds and bombarding Tallahassee about this, we got our funding back. They were gonna cut it, we got it back, because we inundated them with requests to fix this problem. We need to do this again. Last night, there were different state organizations, educational organizations, and local organizations meeting in different places. I just got phone calls from different people saying, hey, we're meeting over here, we're meeting over here, we're meeting over here. All trying to organize to fight this. The community is getting riled up. We need to rile up Manatee County as well. I mean, there's, and these are nonpartisan groups. There's a non, and there's a bipartisan parent group forming in Sarasota right now to fight this. So this is not about party politics. This is about protecting our kids, preserving our tax funds that we are paying and that are gonna allow these businesses to come in and attempt to take over all of our spaces. The charter school running the world, charter school businesses running the world does not work. This is a continued push for the privatization of education. These businesses are not in it for the kids. They are in it, they make money, this is what they do. They are in it, they make money, this is what they do. So, okay, so I'm going to end my rant, but I really, really, really wanted to put it out to the public, that this is not something that we are, or at least me, and I'm going to guess Mr. Kennedy as well, because I know he wants to speak to it, and I've seen everybody else's faces sitting up here. This is not something that is like, oh, this is going to be great for our schools, for our kids. So I just wanted to vent my frustrations a little bit, put it out to the public, get them aware. They need to know what's going on, because we're not meeting again for a couple of weeks. We won't have an opportunity to talk about this. And I wanted to get the rest of the board's opinions on this. I want to hear what you have to say. We have a meeting on the 27th at, in, is it Bradenton City Hall?
Legislative.
Legislative one. And I will guarantee you, I'm going to be bringing this up. But we don't get to talk to each other before then. So I just wanted to present my rant, because that's what it is, and, and give the rest of the board the opportunity to throw out comments.
So lots on, so first off, just legislative delegation meeting?
Delegation.
You only get like two minutes.
I know, but I'm going to use them.
And so.
And I'll use two minutes after you.
And you guys can absolutely sign up, but typically.
Typically it's the chair.
It's been the chair.
Issue.
Typically been the chair that talks to the delegation about our priorities.
Right.
Legislative priorities. Now, we may want to add something about that, or you can, you can ask to sign up on your end, that's fine. I do think, though, and I'm okay with board members having, and I don't disagree with what you were saying, most of it, right? But I think we're early in the stages here. I do not think, I think personally, this was a fishing expedition with these letters. It was casting a net and seeing what's out there. I don't think the reality is they're going to come take over three classrooms in Lincoln and make, and get to 900 kids. I just don't, I don't, that's not a reality. We don't have that facility. Hardly, we don't have that facility for them to use. So yes, does it, does it put extra work and burden on the staff? No doubt, no doubt, right? Like, 20 days to respond. Obviously, it's pushed back to November, so it doesn't matter now, we have to respond now. So they really couldn't put out those letters till November. So I agree with you, it definitely does put burden on our staff, unfortunately. But I don't believe that it's going to be a hostile takeover for the majority of schools in the state. I, I do think there's going to be some takeovers of schools, and, and I don't think so in Manatee County. Look at, look at other things that we've had in the, in the legislature that is, has happened, that we are not as affected in this county as others. Vouchers, et cetera, right? Like, we haven't seen the skyrocket of vouchers and homeschooling like we have across the state. Why? I think because we have a great district. Not only our public, normal public schools, but our charter public schools, right? And we have a very good district. So I don't, I think it's a swing and a miss for them. But I still think they got to swing, right? If you're a bit, and I, whether you want to say they're businesses, and I agree with that, you only, you, you only can hit a home run if you swing, right? So they're going to swing at every possible chance they get. You listed all like the criteria, and only one fits?
No.
That's their chance to swing, right? But I think they're going to swing and miss. So I, I, I'm not saying that we, we, the public shouldn't know, they should absolutely know, they should know exactly what the pros and cons of all this is. We should sit here and say, you know, go talk to legislators, our, our local legislators as well, have, have parents, if you're for or against, whatever it is, talk to your legislators, absolutely. Because there's nothing up here we can change in our policies or laws, whatever, right? It's all in Tallahassee. But I also want to say this. I think that we have to have a clear, from the board, us five, we have to have a clear message about our response to this, not singularly saying different things, right? So we've all got to come with, as one, to say, and I think we're all pretty much, I mean, I guess I don't know, but I'm for choice and I'm for the charters, but I, I do believe this process is, there definitely needs to be major, 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 major tweaking, right? But I also, but I also will warn, there's a building just to the west of us that, that is, I, I think politically, I don't, I mean, I know we, we may say, I agree with the premise that it's bipartisan, but it's not from the powers that be. And, and if, I, I don't, I don't want to jump in to a briar patch if we don't have to jump into a briar patch. I don't want to get prickly if we don't have to get prickly. And I, and my point in saying that is, I think it'll work out, because I don't, like I said, I think it's a swing and a miss for them here in Manatee County. Now, is it in Sarasota and all the other counties? I don't know. But I think it's a swing and a miss. And so my concern is that we, as a board, have to make sure that we have a, a unified message of saying, whatever we're saying. My opinion would be as less vinegary as possible and, and honey as possible, right? You attract more flies with honey than you do with vinegar. So mine would be that way, and we fight it from behind the scenes, right? And you, you get people together, et cetera. I just don't want us to all of a sudden have these from, from different voices, because there's five of us, headline, headline quotes that are like, whoa, you know what I mean? And not, not because we said anything wrong, but just in general. I, so I think we do have to have this conversation of what do we want the board, our.
Message.
Our message to be, and I, I think our message is, is, it's not going to, it, we don't have those spaces available. I'll, I mean, I'll defer very quickly to you, Dr. Brezlin, to maybe help with that message, right?
Thank you.
Of what we can say.
Right, right. So.
How our response will be.
Right. So when we look at the legislation for Schools of Hope, and it lays out persistently low-performing schools, and of course, they've expanded that definition, they've expanded the reach from a persistently low-performing school, so that's all spelled out in the statute that, that you presented. What the outside entities that, that have been approved for Schools of Hope don't know is all the different programmings we have in our schools. They don't know the 112 early learning classrooms. They don't know exactly Sable and Access, and where we already contract with a contracted site on the Harley campus. And so we have prepared already, starting as a school district, for all of our facilities. We know our capacity per the reports, but we also know the programmings we, we offer. We know what self-contained classrooms, et cetera. And so we will, we will continue to do our due diligence to be ready to respond to any letter. What I don't want is for schools that have been named to lose focus on providing the grade instruction every day in the classrooms. And when we start to hear distractors such as someone possibly coming in and taking over a school, it does put pressure on the principal, it puts pressure on the teachers. I don't want that pressure. You know, this is something that, that we can handle at the district level. Your classrooms are fine, the instruction continues. Focus on your students, focus on making sure your teachers have everything you need. And then on our end, we will focus on making sure we respond responsibly to any valid letter that comes in, noting the wonderful programs that we have on our campus that maybe aren't noted in just the student numbers. Because we do have them. And I can speak confidently that we have great programming at Lincoln that isn't recognized in the numbers, but once we explain it as a district, I don't feel that anyone's going to want to diminish any of those programs, and the same with the Harley campus. And so I feel confident that we're ready to respond as a district. I don't want it to be construed as an emergency for Manatee County. If another district received 28 letters, that's a much different story for that other district. But we will, we will abide by all the laws, the state board rules. We will do so responsibly, and we will do it with the complete information, the complete picture, which we have, right? So we're going to give that complete picture, and then I think our programs will speak for themselves, and we'll be in a really good spot in Manatee County. And I want that to be our message, is that our schools are in a good place, we're in a good spot, we use our space responsibly, and we'll, we'll draw out that narrative. So those, and it's, I think it's a great opportunity for our public to see that we really do have programs that we need to amplify that we're doing for our community. And this is an opportunity, in my opinion, to amplify the great way that we use all of our spaces. And so that's exactly what we're going to do. We're going to be transparent, and we're going to be informative through this process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't have much left to add, because some really good points have been made. I think, I think, Mr. Chair, you're right, we should have a unified voice. And Heather, I think you're exactly right. We, we do need to get the, the public activated. I think it's going to be a little harder, because the AP ACE issue, like, directly affected kids and parents' lives. This one's a little more esoteric. So it's, I think it's going to be a little bit harder to get people to grasp it, which is the task on us, to make sure people fully understand the issue. I think just a suggestion, well, let me, I'll come to that in one second. So yes, we should be vigilant, but to the Chair's point, I don't think we, and to Dr. Brezlin's point, I don't think we need to be panicked. I believe personally, this legislation was aimed at Dade County, Broward County, schools that have multiple.
Right.
Under 50% enrollment schools, and, and those school boards have been, have been, for political reasons, or, you know, I don't want to put words in our mouth, whatever their reasons are, they've been close, they've been slow to close under-capacity schools. And so I, I agree that, you know, we got these two letters, and this shows you how incompetent, at least this outfit is, that they sent them before they were supposed to. And it's just somebody sitting in a staff office with a spreadsheet of school capacity numbers, based on FISH reports. And so anybody that met their criteria that they set in Excel, they got a letter.
Yeah.
And then they sent it too early and make some more dumb. And also, like, some of these, some of these Schools of Hope oper, they're not even from Florida. Like, they are, and I do want to correct one thing, and Legal can correct me if I'm wrong. I think even the Schools of Hope operators, they, on paper, are nonprofits.
No, they're for profit.
Well, I mean, technically, yes, that's how they, that's how they operate, because they, I've said this a million times, but they get their FEFP funding, and then they cut a check to their management company, then they cut a check to their construction company. And so like 40% of the money is gone before a kid has seen it.
Right.
So I mean, they operate like a nonprofit, but I think on paper, I know, like, our public charter schools in this district are, on paper, nonprofits. And Steve, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying you guys are doing anything wrong. But the, because there are good charters and bad charters. There are scrupulous ones, community-based, and there are, I would say, unscrupulous ones that, Heather, to your point, they're, they're in it for the business model, not to educate kids and improve lives. So I, I think, Heather, you're absolutely right, we've got to keep an eye on this, and, Chad and Dr. Brezlin's point, like, you know, let's keep an eye on it, but we're doing a lot of really good things, and, like, we only got letters for two, two campuses. So that's probably, that's probably a good sign. But I just have a suggestion for the united message, and, and this is just the first draft. Because a powerful argument that, you know, Mr. Tatum has been on, is about the inequality in construction standards. And so I think that level playing field is a very powerful argument that moves people and, and touches people. So to say that, like, these schools can move in, take a piece of the campus, and we have to pay all of their bills out of our funding while they scoop up all their FEFP and don't have to spend a good portion of it on keeping the lights on and bussing the kids back and forth. I mean, I think that is going to get people, and we'll probably get legislators who didn't even really understand the details of what they were voting on.
Yeah.
To be like, okay, just like they did with school security and the interior door thing, they had to fix that right away. I, I have a feeling we're going to see some fixes in this session, but that's on us, and that's on the public, to make sure that our legislators are aware so they can fix it. So.
Can I respond?
Yeah.
I don't see a big panic, and I'm not panicking. Okay, I'm just.
I didn't mean to imply that you were.
No, no, no. I just want to make sure that people understand that, yeah, that I'm not panicking. But I feel like that we need to present a united front with other districts. Because they're going to be majorly impacted. It may not hit us, it may not actually impact us at all. Because, you know, to Dr. Brezlin's point, we have fabulous programs in these facilities, and I don't know where they think they're going to put anybody in these buildings. But this is going to be majorly impactful on school districts across the state in terms of, again, our taxpayer funds. Again, to your point, to our taxpayer fund. This, this is not something that the public should be like, oh, okay, this is, this, this is fine, they can take over this school. And, you know, and this is, as a taxpayer myself, this irritates me to no end. And I want to present a united front with the other, the other districts in the state. Even if it doesn't hit us at all, if we're able to get through this with no impacts at all, we need to stand together, we need to work together. There's strength in numbers. And if it's two or three districts with the, you know, with the biggest numbers of letters that are, that are trying to, to stand against this, they're going to get swept over. I feel like that is, that is where my, where my frustration lies, is because there is so often pushes to divide and conquer in education in this state. And, you know, we, we all know about the push for privatization. We, we were threatened with funding in the summer. We didn't know if we were going to get our, our federal funding, because they didn't give it to us right away. So we're, you know, we're, every, every district in the state is looking at, oh my gosh, what do we need to cut if we don't get our funding? Our state funding gets less and less, we know there's going to be a deficit in the next couple of years from state funding as well. And we need to work together. And this is why we have FADS, this is why we have FSBA, to work together to, to combat this, because we are the ones bearing the brunt. It's always, oh, let's, here's a underfunded mandate, here's another underfunded mandate, here's some rules for you that's going to be really expensive, which we all started to implement with the safety thing, which was ridiculously expensive, and then they were able to roll that back. But we've already paid for so much of it. You know, the, the bills have been paid to do what they're telling us to do. And if we cannot work together to fight this, we are going to be trying to run districts, some of them much bigger than ours, on pennies. So this is what is leading to my frustration. And again, it may, it may not, it may not have any impact here at all. We could, we could, you know, just fly under the radar. But I feel like if we just hang out under the radar, then we're not supporting each other. And we need to do that. We need to speak about this. Because it may really hurt Sarasota, it may really hurt Hillsborough, these are our neighbors. You know, and so, so really, that is, that is my frustration, that this lack of support for public education from the powers that be frustrates me. When you privatize education, and those companies can refuse students for behavior issues, for ESE, IEPs, and 504s, you know, like, private schools, for example, can do that, they don't have to provide those. When there's organizations out there that can do this, and now they're like, oh, well, you know, it'll be fine, they'll take everybody, they won't take everybody. I mean, look at our, our kids at the Access Program. Who's going to take those kids? Who's going to take our kids at Horizons? At our, you know, alternative schools? That's public education. We do that, we take everybody, and we love them all. And we need to support each other and show the support for these programs and work with them, because these companies coming in, it's not in their heart.
Chad, one quick reply. I, I totally agree, but this has been going on for 20-plus years.
I know.
This Schools of Hope thing has just hit the accelerator on, on the movement, and I don't see that changing, which, you know, just this, this is the environment we're in, so let's, let's live in it and work in it. I think the work you're talking about will happen through FADS, through the FSBA, through our conversations with our legislators individually and those around the state. But I mean, I gotta be honest, you know, Sarasota has a board and an administration that can handle themselves very well, Hillsborough does too. I admire your message of unity, but frankly, all I care about is Manatee County schools. And. And, and I don't mean that to sound harsh. But that is my sole focus. Like, I, I, the, the message is a good one, that we need to unify and work together. But there might be other board majorities out there that are welcoming this with open arms. And so, even within coalitions of like the, the, help me with the name, Gulf Course, the Central Coalition of the Gulf, that, you know, all the waterfront county.
Greater Florida.
Thank you. Greater Florida. So there's, there might be school boards in there that don't agree with us at all. And so I want to, I want to focus our work on our advocacy and not trying to convince other school boards of what they need to do. I think we're all pretty much on the same page. We haven't had a full discussion. But, but I think if we get a chance to talk about our unified, what our unified message should be, because I think that's a great point, if we're out there doing our own thing, and I'll certainly stand down for my comment I made earlier, that's going to be counterproductive. And plus, the way that we function as a board. You know, we, of course, we all have our right to speak and make public pronouncements however we want. But if we're acting as board members, we should be acting with the, with the consent of the majority, if that makes sense. And there's a lot, there's a lot of good ideas out there, even if this does, if they do come for us. I think, especially at Harley, I, I know there's, there's demand for pre-K that's unfilled in the Pride Park area. There's, there's families out there that would like to be in pre-K that can't. We have charter partners. Mr. Zikfu sent us an email earlier this week about starting a conversation. And Heather, to your point, we have these great partners already here that we know and trust, and we have great relationships with them. Can we lean on them to maybe help us fight off this
Incursion?
Yes. Thank you, ELA teacher. So anyway, a lot, lot more to come, and I'm glad we got a chance to touch on it. So thank you.
Yeah, I would just say, I, just so we can leave here knowing there's something, I would like to ask.
Yeah, I have.
I will. I, I would like to ask, what Dr. Breslin said, I, in my opinion, is our unified message. Like, we're worried about what we're doing on an everyday basis here, and we're not, we're not concerned about what we can't control, right? We can't control people applying, et cetera. We've done our due diligence. We're, we're, we have, we have the, our people looking at the staff. We, we take care of our schools, and we staff correctly, et cetera. I would, I would be okay with communication teams, along with Dr. Breslin, to put something, we don't have to have something out right this minute. But over the next day or so, put it together to get to us, because I don't know if any one of us is going to have, like, the right thing, and all of us say, oh, yes, and we all come with five store, you know, five different versions of something, and then we've got to figure it out. I think if, if you guys, this is my opinion, you guys can say no to this, of course, if let the communication team, Dr. Breslin, come up with a statement that we can then agree on as a board, to say, hey, we do like that. If we don't, write back to them saying, hey, fix this, or fix that, or whatever. You have something to?
Just the, the mechanism that you're talking about, Chair, if I may interject, I apologize, is just that you, you would pass a resolution as a board. I know that Mr. Tatum has reservations on passing resolutions, but that's the mechanism legislatively that the board would.
I, but I kind of mean from like a, like a media outlet stance, is what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is, I want, I want us to have a, a response that when media is like, what does Manatee County School Board feel about? We have a blanket response of XYZ. We feel like, hey, we're doing great, blah, 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 blah. Instead of it saying, I say something different to Bay News Nine, to Mr. Tatum, to Mr. Kennedy, and it goes like that. You know what I mean?
I understand, but if we do that through a communications message that we individually pass by each of you, we have a sunshine issue. So it needs to be through the resolution process. We can give a, a statement about the facts of, we've had inquiries, this is our response, you know, we're studying that, those sorts of things. But when it comes to making a political pronouncement of the board's position, that's a legislative matter that you need to resolve through resolution, in my opinion.
So then let's, let's, let me step back then and say, I'm okay with having a, a comment to the media of what you just said, and figuring that out. That's not, maybe that's our stance, but that's what the district's response is. And I would back exactly what Dr. Breslin said. But I'm, that's just me.
Okay, a couple of things here. First of all, since we got this, and since we're going to Tallahassee, I've been scheduling meetings, like I said before, with our legislators. And when this popped up, I'm like, can I get a meeting to talk to somebody about this as a board member and how I feel? And then you, from a legal perspective, when you look at the statute, it's all over the place, to be honest with you. I mean, you get so lost in it. So if I had a legal something that I could use as a talking point, and which, like I said, and then when you go to this Master Academy website, you go to the website, it's got a link to the Florida DOE. And the first paragraph of that link says, "School of Hope, a charter operated of Hope operator, which serves students from one or more persistently low-performing schools, is located in the tenant zone of site." I can't see that word very well here. It's the glass thing. Low-performing schools within five, right here, persistently.
Persistently low-performing school.
Within a
Or within five miles of that.
Within a five-mile radius of such school, which is, ever is greater. Oh, my, my, my. Of a Title I eligible, eligible school. Within a five-mile radius, to me, is, it's not taking over your school.
It's my understanding, Ms. Spray, that the, the regulation now has greatly expanded that there's no five-mile radius requirement under, under the rule.
Right. But this.
Yes, ma'am.
Their link says within a five. So I'm going on what is published out there today. So I plan to talk about this up there, because I think it's something that needs to be, the light needs to be shined on it up there. And matter of fact, 9:00 AM Tuesday, I plan to talk about it. So if you could give me some legal terms of whatever, I don't know, something. But I've already printed the letters. I've already printed my little transportation that we talked about at the meeting, that I'm like, unfund mandates is another one of my big topics that I wanted to talk about with legislators up there. So I don't know if we have to have a whole, maybe I can have a media comment on how the board feels, but with Ms. Felton's frustration, and my, I'm already going up there. I just want to at least share my concerns.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so I don't want to.
You don't have to go anywhere. You can call somebody this afternoon, right?
Exactly. I don't want the board to think that I'm restricted from going up there and bringing.
No.
Right.
No, no, no.
Because I've already, I'm already like on it and planning and.
No, no, no. I, I did not mean that at all.
Okay.
That you're restricted. I don't, I'm not saying that, you absolutely can go talk to whoever, like, Mr. Kennedy said, you, you can do what you want. I, I'm, I'm not saying that at all about going and being diligent and talking to our, our community members, talking to our, you know.
Local legislators.
Absolutely. I'm saying, from a media standpoint, for us to have a, a unified front and a response, that me personally is geared towards remembering our students, right? Like, like Dr. Breslin said, these schools, there's still students in there today, right now. And like, we're talking about, rather than how do we make them better and give all the resources, et cetera, we're talking about this, right? Which is, we're not, it's not ridiculous to bring it up. I'm saying it should never have been an issue, right?
Right.
But I, I also don't want Manatee County in a light that, that puts us out there in general. I mean, just, I mean, we all, we talk about being boring, right? So
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may.
I think there's a way to do this, right?
I, I want to avoid anyone, you know, going by one of our schools and seeing a reporter on the corner. That's not what our students and our teachers need. We can certainly, working with the communication team, just put out, you know, whether an FAQ, or how we're responding responsibly and informing our community and anyone outside of our community of the great programs we have. That's how I would respond. So it's clean, it's responsible, it's informative, and it's, and it's just factual, that we do have really great programming that may not be noted in one report, but we can certainly provide it. And, and, and keep a calm focus on just moving forward with our current priorities for the year.
And we should absolutely all be diligent on, on whatever our opinions are with it to our.
Has anyone else looked at this website for this?
Yeah, I did.
Wow, it's kind of like generic.
I just want to share with the board that if I get any media inquiries, Dr. Breslin, if you don't mind, I'm just going to refer them to you.
Direct.
I'm going to no comment and tell them to talk to Dr. Breslin.
Absolutely. Our, our team is ready to respond. Jamie's already, all over the response, we have received inquiries. I think because of a meeting earlier this week in a, in a close-by district, we received some inquiries. And so our team has responded as well. And again, our, our message is, is we have great programming, and we look forward to amplifying those programs that are already in those sites.
There ain't no space. Did you, you have anything?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll have something to say, but, but.
You wanted some more?
I just, I, I'm absolutely all in on everything Dr. Breslin has said in the course of this conversation. But to Ms. Spray's point, I, I'm still going to, I'm still going to talk about it as, as my own opinion. This is my thoughts. This is my feelings. I, I know better than to speak for the board. But I, I feel like this is an issue that needs to be addressed. And it, if we, and, and I understand the being under the radar. I get that. Other districts are not. And we've seen what happens there. But I feel like if I just sit back, then I am neglecting my duty as a member of the school board, as an elected official, that I am beholden to my constituents to make sure that they're aware of what's going on, even though it may never impact us. And, you know.
Don't worry, we're on it.
And, and, you know, it just, you know, and, and of course, you know, I'm on the FSBA's advocacy committee. I, I'm, so I'm part of the bigger organization that, that addresses this as well. And it just, I, I, I can't, I cannot, in good conscience, not speak to this if I'm asked. And I, again, I will, I will, I'll try to write, wrote myself in. But this, this concerns me. And, and, and I hope our legislators do pay attention to this and say, oh, my gosh, this is not what we intended. And, and are able to, this next session, to kind of pull back on, on things. But whatever I can do to make them aware of how this is going to impact the state, all of their constituents, the taxpayers' money, I, I feel that I need to do so.
So I'm, I'm a supporter of the Manatee County school system. I supported the referendum, the one mil referendum, so that it would be passed. I've been out and about, looking at everything from our orchestra that we had over the weekend to our arts program. So I think we have a really good school system in Manatee County, and I also, and I support it. But I'm also a school choice fan. There's a model for this that is probably coming out of New York. I actually believe I read some articles where some Florida legislators went up there and looked over what are called success academies. There's a good book written by Thomas Sowell, who did some extensive research on this model up in New York, where charter schools were put into the same schools as traditional public schools and significantly outperformed them. If you want to read the book about that, it's called Charter Schools and Their Enemies by Thomas Sowell. Secondly, as an elected official, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go out there and seek media attention or go out and try and talk about this publicly, but I'm an elected official, and kind of like you, Ms. Felton, if someone asks me my opinion about this, I'm not going to say, well, I just, I just go along with whatever the PA announcement was from the school system. I, I'm not as opposed to this plan as maybe some of the other people up here on this board. I, I need to look into a little more about not having, like, we have to pay quote-unquote "all of their expenses." I'd have to look into that a little bit more and see if they shouldn't have to make a contribution to utilities and, you know, maintenance facilities and stuff like that. I don't know if that's necessarily quote-unquote "fair." But, but again, I haven't done enough research to really understand how that would actually play out in reality when the bills started to get paid. So that's what I have to, have to say on this. There is a model for this. It's been implemented. It's been well documented. It showed significant success, if you'd like to go out and look, and look at that book. And if people ask me my opinion on it, that's what I just said is probably what I will give. Again, I'm an elected official, and so, just like you, I, I believe I have a responsibility to provide my, my opinion on these type of legislative matters, and not just to say, well, I, I go along with whatever the public affairs announcement was from the, from the school system. But I'm not going to go out there and talk about it, seek publicity about it, but I will give my opinion, kind of what I said, just kind of frankly and matter-of-factly, that we have a great school system, and I would encourage people to look at our school system for their students. But there is a model that has shown success in another part of the country for this. And it is statutory law too. So we can, I guess we can all go try and fight it, or we can try and, you know, try and work within it. Because if you look at, I was looking at an article just a second ago, I think, some school board members down in Sarasota went and talked to Representative McFarland. And if you read that article, the, the comment that she made was something to the effect of, well, I can look into it, but there's not much appetite in Tallahassee for making changes. So again, we can try and, you know, buck the powers that be, or we can try and get some tweaks to it. If it is truly like a, if it's really financially not equitable, so to speak, and work it like that. So I won't belabor the point. I'm just not as adamantly opposed to the theory of it. I might be opposed to some of the actual ways that it's implemented, for instance, and us having to pay some of their expenses. That's all I'd say about that. Thanks.
Thank you. No, I mean, I somewhat agree with what you just said. And, but I think, to be honest, like Dr. Breslin said, we need to concentrate on, on our schools and our students. And we do a great job in our schools. We're, we're not so under, you know, populated in schools that we've got crazy amount of space. And I just think it's not shown in a spreadsheet, the programs we're doing. And we need to make sure we, we do that. And, which is a good thing. We need to make sure we're doing that all the time, telling the public what, what we have and what we offer, you know? Anything else?
I just wanted to say something to Mr. Tatum on, in some areas, you said in some areas, this might be a good thing. But I think when you look at, you know, we got two letters. Some districts got, how many did you say?
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight in Hillsboro, twenty-seven in Brevard, and I don't know about elsewhere.
So, see, so there's 28 locations that are probably failing schools, I'm guessing.
Under capacity.
Under capacity, or, well, it also says underperforming.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of criteria, but I.
Yeah, there's so many things. I mean, that's the problem with the legal. When you read the statutes, it's like, okay, in a five-mile radius, under capacity, underperforming. You have to have all of those little blocks in line. And I don't think we have those, we don't, you know, two out of three, or all three. To me, it should be all three of those key, and that's only three that I could pull up if I looked at the statutes. It's, it's even Gray B or higher, oh, darn it. Some of them are like five years in a row. Some of them are like, five years in a row. I don't think we have anything that's been about five years in a row here. So, you know, you fluctuate. I mean, whenever we have a turnaround plan, like we do at one of our schools now, that was just most recent, there's no capacity. Why didn't they look at that school? Because there's no capacity there. You know, but it's mapping out what program we have at every school, how many people are in those programs at those schools, and including staff, to let the district and this organization know, I don't know what you're thinking, but we have, go into one of our special need class, and they do have a lot of equipment, plus an assistant, and they're sometimes cramped in a small room. So we don't get to count that as student capacity in the fish. But they're at our schools, we provide transportation, yada, 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 you know, all the expense that goes with that. So, in some areas, maybe good to have all those little blocks that line up according to the statute, but there's so many pieces in that statute that I think somebody, this organization is clinging to meet their need, not ours. So, anyway, but a good unified message would be great. I think that we'll get that, and we'll use that. But to me, again, I'm going to go with whatever. Talk to the superintendent, we're on it, period.
Yeah, it works, it works. I mean, follow the law. If they can come in and they're legally allowed to use the facilities, then they do. But if the capacity is, I'm sure there'll be some discussions about, look, you think you have the capacity, but you really don't, because they'll move in and they'll go, well, we don't have enough room. And you go, yeah, you don't have enough room.
We're in the middle of a rezone, too. So that's not even, taking that into consideration here, we're in the middle of rezoning our schools.
Yeah.
As I said, in theory, I'm not opposed to it. In practice, we have to, you know, make it work, just like any big new government bureaucratic program, there's going to be, what's the word that they use, they, what's the word that, when you're going through the, growing pains?
Growing pains.
Yeah, that's the word I was looking for, so.
Well, sometimes they just don't get it right.
Yeah.
And in this case, they didn't get it right, in my opinion. And that's what sometimes you got to fight against. So bureaucrat, you know, if you're saying, you know, Representative McFarland says, oh, there's no appetite, well, it's because there's not enough people talking about it. So the more people talk about it, the more of an appetite they'll get.
No, it was a good discussion, so, for sure. And Dr. Breslin, I think you and your team have a direction from us.
Thank you. I appreciate it, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Everybody, thank you. Look at me, am I forgetting something? Okay, I thought you were going to be like, are you going to do this?
We're closed on Mondays.
Oh, yeah, Monday is what, Columbus Day?
Enjoy your three-day weekend.
It's a record day.
It's record day. No school.
No school for students. We are open for staff.
We are open, yeah. All right, great.
Please come to work.
Good meeting. We'll see everybody October 28th.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, ma'am.